Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to our special city council meeting of August 31st, 2022. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on the phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communication to be recognized to speak. The City of Gloucester supports that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity, or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. In this vein, we as city councils do not condone language that is discriminatory or offensive and will not accept it at city council meetings. I'd like to announce the folks that are on the call right now. We've got Tony Gross, Sean Nolan, our vice chair, Scott Memmott, Ward one councillor, Frank Majota, our Ward three councillor, Jeff Worthy, at-large councillor, Jamie O'Hara, at-large councillor, and we are missing councillor O'Neill, and we are missing Jason Grohl will not be on the call tonight. I think we have everyone else, right? So we've got seven, three, four, five, six, seven, seven of us. Also, Joanne Sinos is our city clerk. Thank you, Joanne, for being here. I know this is a real busy time for you, and it's very much appreciated. And I'm grateful that our attorney, Suzanne Egan, is on the call, although she is on vacation, and that is very much appreciated, Suzanne. So thank you for being here. First order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is for council vote under the city charter, section 211B, emergency measure, city council vote to adopt as an emergency measure to determine if an emergency exists, and then to consider any proposed city council actions relative to public safety regarding the train crossings in Gloucester.
Okay, thank you. And let me just summarize what this all means. The general rule under the city charter is that no measure can be adopted by the city council on the same date. Specifically, an emergency measure shall be introduced in the form and manner prescribed generally, except that it shall be plainly designated as an emergency measure. Preamble, which describes and declares that an emergency exists, and which defines its nature in clear and specific terms, shall first be separately voted upon and shall require the affirmative votes of two-thirds of the members of the full city council. Following such adoption of an emergency preamble, the city council may, by a two-thirds vote, pass the measure with or without amendment at the meeting at which it was introduced. Emergency measure shall stand repealed on the 61st day following their adoption unless a vote of the city council in conformity with the procedures for measures generally is passed extending it for a period not to exceed an additional 60 days, or an earlier date is specified in that measure. I also wanted to note, we got some feedback from both Suzanne Egan and outside council, and who did not charge us for any of this. I read the requirement, who read the requirement in the charter of a vote of two-thirds of the members of the full city council to mean that the threshold vote to declare an emergency exists requires a vote of six of nine authorized councillors. Also, what types of emergency decisions can or cannot make under section 211B. There's nothing in the charter that broadens the substantive authority of the city council when an emergency is declared. Rather, section 211B simply accelerates the legislative process. I think everyone understands that, but for the purpose of the public understanding, I thought that that would be helpful to mention. And I see that there are 10 attendees on the call. So, so what I'd like to do right now is councillor Worthy, and councillor O'Hara, and councillor O'Neill, and she is now on the call. Welcome, Tracy. So, per our charter, three members of the council are able to call for a special meeting, and I would like to, to ask councillor Worthy to begin the meeting by discussing why you feel that this is an emergency right now. So if you could, you have the floor councillor, and so take it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Gilman. Before I begin, I saw that councillor Nolan's hand was up. I'm not sure if he had something to add before we get to this point, and that's your call.
Can you speak a little bit louder?
Yes, can you hear me better now?
Not really.
That's strange. Is anybody else having trouble hearing me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I saw that councillor Nolan had his hand up before I go into a presentation on this.
Councillor Nolan.
Yes, Jeff, you are a little soft spoken, but it was, I just wanted to recognize that Tracy was on, and councillor President Gilman did do that.
Okay, great.
Thank you, councillor.
So, first of all, thank you, Madam President, and to councillor O'Neill and councillor O'Hara for being the first two to join me on the request for a meeting. I know that there were a number of others who did respond to my request for a special council meeting, but once you get to three, that was enough to trigger Joanne Sinos to announce that there's a meeting scheduled. So, that was done in order, in accordance with the charter, and it's not just section 211B, but also 211A, which is the declaration of an emergency comes in one of three categories: peace, health, or safety. And we could argue all three potentially, if we want to add mental health into that, but I think if we look at safety as the category that this would fit under as emergency, that's the argument that I think I would make to declare an emergency. And as you said, councillor Gilman, it doesn't expand our authority, it just truncates the time that we're allowed to legislate without having to post and have public hearings and take a couple of weeks to act. And so the first step is declaring an emergency. Now, when I first got involved with this was, I think we all saw our Facebook post made by former deputy firefighter, former firefighter deputy Steve Aello, that his wife, Anne, and his son, Isaac, were in a situation with a car, was hit by a gate. And it was alarming. I reached out to him, I think a lot of us did, and it raised a question of, is this a one-off or something's happening more often? And we put a post out, this gathered some feedback, and in the course of a couple of days, we had 29 other people say that this had happened to them. And so any thought of, it's a confused driver, it happened once, was quickly erased by 29 people saying, and identifying themselves, saying it had happened to them. And in my mind, if 29 people on Facebook are writing to me saying this happened, there's more. There's people who aren't on Facebook, there's people who don't want to disclose that this happened to them, and there's people who wouldn't even have seen that post at that exact time. So, I want to make sure, before we get into the deliberation on emergency any further, nothing about this measure, or this effort, is a takeaway from the hard work and the effort of the administration, Senator Tar, Representative Ann-Margret Frante. Everyone is speaking the same message, that safety matters. And for me, we had a meeting 35 days ago, where Senator Tar presented and took some input, and I just wanted to go to sleep at night knowing we did everything we could legislatively, from the city council's perspective, to say, we've done everything we can do to make the crossing safer. And so, I don't know how much more we need to say, there's a, there's a real safety issue here. People are driving over the tracks, and the gates are falling. And I think it's partly motion detectors and systems that are necessarily talking to another, but we saw this weekend, I'm sorry, my story doesn't, isn't flowing, this weekend, I was putting together requests to the mayor, and one was to get an update regarding his work with MBTA. And then we saw a video that had close to 10,000 people also see it, that showed this is still an issue. And so I thought, putting a request in for an update would be great, but I want to be able to sleep at night knowing we did everything we could. And that's why I argue to put a special council meeting together to declare an emergency, and then from there take up some emergency measures to try to alleviate the concerns and make it safer. Would you, do you think we need more information on whether there's an emergency? Because I'd be happy to articulate that more, but I think we're all pretty aware of the danger.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to recognize Bob Ryan, who's the chair of a traffic commission. Appreciate him on the call. Former council president Paul Lundberg, former lieutenant for the Gloucester Fire Department, Steve Aello, and right now that we have 15 additional people that are on the call. So, to Jeff's point, either Tracy or Jamie, because you'd also councillor O'Hara and councillor O'Neill, I'm sorry, since you were part of this request, do you have anything to add to anything that councillor Worthy just spoke to?
Yeah, I'll speak up. I'm just grateful, I really am thankful to Jeff and councillor O'Hara, councillor Worthy, sorry, and councillor O'Hara for doing this. And it's really important. All of those train crossings are in Wood, too. Washington Street, Maplewood Ave, Cleveland Street, Cedar Street, Willow Street, they're all in Wood, too. So, not that Wood Two are the only people that drive across them, but it's a dangerous situation. So, thank you very much. And Tony, councillor Gross, I understand you had a little bit of input as well. So thank you all very much for doing this. Thank you.
Awesome. Councillor Nolan.
I do have one question to councillor O'Neill. She made a comment this morning, there was already one other incident today, and Frank had asked that was after or before the MBTA had been, they're doing their work. So if you could clarify, if there was an incident after they came by on Tuesday versus today, if something happened today, to clarify your email.
I am not sure. Today's the 30th, is that correct? So I believe that was...
Today's the 31st.
31st.
So I believe that was done on the 27th, so.
Right, so your response to Frank today, or your response to the email was saying that there was another incident today, and Frank asked, was that today or not? And so that was from the 27th?
I believe so, yes.
All right, so there's been no reports today of any incidents that...
Correct. I got the report today, but it happened on the 27th.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Yep.
So, Madam Clerk, what I'd like you to do is, I think it would be helpful for us to also update each other, and members of the public that are on the call, or might be watching this tomorrow, with the information that we've received, starting with yesterday from Senator Tar. He sent a message in that was from the MBTA. So could you screen share that, Joanne?
Was councillor O'Hara waiting to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jamie, I didn't see that your hand was raised. Initially, it wasn't. I'm sorry. Go ahead, councillors, you have the floor.
No, that's, that's fine. Just, just want to reaffirm the importance and thankfulness to everyone who's been so involved in, in trying to correct this issue. I think all of us are supportive of keeping every person in the city, whether it's a citizen of the city or a visitor, safe. And that's why we are here tonight. So I appreciate everyone's time and effort, and everyone on the call. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. So if you don't mind screen sharing, just because I think it's helpful for people to be able to visualize what we're talking about.
Councillor, are you asking for our clerk to screen share?
Yes.
Okay. Because I could pull that up if we needed to.
Okay, I'd just like to just kind of highlight a few things. If we start, this was from, to Senator Tar from the MBTA officials, started the third paragraph. It says, given the ongoing concerns about the operation of the crossing at Washington Street in Gloucester, we are undergoing a process to change the crossing operation so that the crossing gates stay down for the duration of when a train is at the platform and the train clears the crossing, a significantly longer period than the current design. As part of this process, our engineers are developing a change proposal and analyzing the parameters of this crossing. Once this phase is complete, they will conduct full and detailed tests in the field before implementing new, the crossing operations. We will notify you when this process is complete. And then they went on to describe how it works. And if, if, you can watch this Zoom meeting tomorrow, but they go through the details of this, and the bullet at the end in highlighted font, pause, Joanne, is, can you go back just for a little bit? Thank you. Once changes are implemented, when trains stop at Gloucester Station, the gates will stay down for the duration of the time the train is stopped at the station until it clears the crossing, a significantly longer period than the current design. And the rest is kind of interesting, and technically, there's some important information to understand. There've also been some constituent concerns regarding what can be described as a tail ring. Essentially, the gates are going back down as a train pulls out of the station, heading away from the crossing. Our engineers, me and the MBTA engineers, review telematics and conduct field investigations to determine root cause of tail rings. One common cause is when a train releases its brakes after being stopped, it can occasionally roll backwards a few inches before moving forward. This backward motion is sometimes enough to engage the crossing sensor, and the gates will begin to lower. When a tail ring is reported or discovered in the crossing data, signal maintainers are dispatched to the crossing to adjust the sensors and correct the issue. In the case of the Washington Street Crossing in Gloucester, a tail ring was identified on July 15, 2022, and a correction was implemented. This correction has significantly reduced the instances of tail rings at the crossing. Our team will continue to monitor and make any necessary changes. Please do not hesitate to reach out with any additional concerns. We look forward to your continued partnership. So that was received yesterday and shared by the mayor and on various Facebook pages, and I just wanted to mention that. And Joanne, would you just take a moment to get rid of that screen share and just update us with the brief email that I got at 3:01 today, Wednesday, August 31st, from the mayor? And I sent this to the councillors, and I just want the public to understand what has happened in the last 48 hours.
Want me to screen share, or just...
Yeah, no, you can screen share. It would be great. I'll start to read it. I'm writing to let you know that neither myself, this is to Val Gilman from Greg Berger, our mayor, and copy to Jill Cahill. I'm writing to let you know that neither myself nor Jill are able to attend the special city council meeting tonight due to our commitments to previously scheduled meetings. As you know, I've been consistently working with Senator Tar, Representative Frante, and officials from MBTA to resolve the issues related to the train crossings. As an update, Keolis was on site again today since the first outbound train, and all gates are functioning properly. The gates at the Washington Street Crossing are newer technology than the other crossing gates through the city, and Keolis has made the necessary program changes to the Washington Street gates to address the safety concerns. They will be making upgrades to Cleveland, Maplewood, and Cedar Willow gates this fall. The upgrades will take place at the end of September, early October. Commuter rail service will be stopped at Gloucester Station proper during the upgrades to the rest of this line. Public safety is a top priority, and the actions that we've taken thus far reflect this. If the city council decides to put a request forward to my office, I will respond, respond once it is received. So I just wanted to, to read that. So, so everyone is updated on that. So, so I guess what we should probably do at this point is councillor Worthy, if you want to make a motion, that we, we put the, the motion for the emergency measure on the floor, then we can, we can properly discuss this. So councillor Worthy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to move the Gloucester City Council evokes charter procedures 211A and B to declare that an emergency exists relative to the safety of residents crossing MBTA tracks. Nice move.
Second.
So we have a motion by councillor Worthy, and is seconded by councillor O'Hara. So let's have a discussion. So we'll, we'll begin by councillor Worthy.
Thank you again. So firstly, on the updates from Senator Tar and Mayor Berger, I think it's awesome that they're, I think you said a flurry of stuff in the last 48 hours, and that's wonderful to see. The tail ring issue, that July 15 notification, MBTA came from video that I took and sent to them, and they actually were very responsive and came down and fixed it the next day. But that doesn't address the issues with the double closings on Cleveland Street and Cedar Street. It doesn't address the extra closing for the train going, I guess, inbound to Boston. There's no rollback on that one. So, there's a question that we aren't able to answer or affect, what's happening with the gates, up or down. I don't know, but the public is very anxious about the safety. And if it turns out that we put something forward, and it's all resolved in the next 48 hours, great. And if it's not resolved, given how challenged MBTA is in every community in the state and Keolis throughout the world, I think us having something to fall back on as an emergency order is sound, because it gives us the flexibility to operate very quickly over the next 60 days. So I think there is an emergency, and I'd like to see my colleagues support that as well.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Nolan.
Through various measures of watching and finding out different things that happen around the city and the city gates, I understand they're working on Washington Street. We do have an issue with Cedar, Willow, Cleveland, and also Maplewood. One very, very clear with a gate on Cleveland yesterday doing weird things. I can say with a clear conscience that my trust in the MBTA and Keolis is pretty close to zero after dealing with them with the trains, the idling issues in West Gloucester, the difference of opinion between management and union, and the clear communications. Things that have happened in front of me and in front of Senator Tar, and members of Keolis, and management, and the MBTA, that just seem defunct. And you can talk to people around Hill and Ferry Street, and, and listen to idle and trains, or people aren't, aren't supposed to be there. I understand what they're trying to do, and they have a problem to manage. I just don't trust them. And the fact that, you know, maybe Washington Street is good, I'm more concerned with the gate on, on Cleveland Street, shaking and moving around and, and stuff like that. So to say that in the fall, we're going to look at the other gates, I think it negates the safety of the other portions of, of the city. And I do believe there's a strong emergency here for us to communicate, the DPU, which is the Department of Public Utilities, which is also an oversight committee for the MBTA, and give our strong opposition that we, we have issues that need to be fixed. They have a lot going on downtown in Boston. I understand, you know, Philadelphia, Washington DC are worse than us at this, and, you know, may, maybe if they can't get things together, or it's 2022, maybe it should go into receivership. But the, the actual problem is, the people in our city need to feel safe, and they should be able to have a way of making sure gates function properly for the safety. So I will be supporting this emergency matter. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Who else would like to speak?
Seeing none, I will speak. I too believe that this is worthy of taking this emergency vote. I say that only because all of the remedies that are put in place, that are in the process of being tried out, haven't been tested. And to me, it's important to have some reliability and consistency. You know, right now, we've seen a lot of data that shows that things have not been happening consistently. I'm grateful to have three people on site today from Keolis, working with Ted Costa, from the beginning of the first train coming out of Rockport. And that's, that's very reassuring to hear, because when people are on site, it certainly helps. But I believe at this point, we have to keep the, the fire going right now for attention here in Gloucester. And so I will be supporting the need for the emergency requests. Is there anyone else that would like to, to speak? Councillor Gross, and then councillor O'Hara.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't going to speak on this particular motion, but that you, those two pieces of correspondence, and I know that the mayor's email was just passing on information, it did not, he didn't generate the information other than, you know, his, his unfortunate conflict that he can't be here tonight. But I got no solace out of, you know, the communication, the unsigned communication that supposedly came from the MBTA, the first one that, that you put up there, to say that this is resolved. And so I do believe, you know, that, that this is still, an emergency is still in, in place, and that we need to move forward on it. So, you know, even though we've gotten this new information, I don't think that that at all diminishes the, our, our emergency declaration of emergency.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor O'Hara.
Thank you. I want to support what councillor Nolan has said, as well as councillor Gross and, and Worthy. There's ample documentation on the deficiencies of the MBTA, the Federal Transportation Administration today, really, or, or report was released by them on the MBTA and their deficiencies throughout their system. So there's ample information, but our focus is, is clearly and, and should be on the citizens of, of our city, on the stress that, that these gates are, are having on, on drivers, schools back in session, that just creates another layer that, that we haven't seen. And, and we, we can't talk about what the ramifications of that, but, you know, God forbid, you know, a parent trying to get their child to whether the high school, or to O'Malley, or wherever they may be going, any kind of problems are totally unacceptable. But we're here tonight to hopefully support emergency measure and keep, keep the, whatever we can do as the city council to protect our citizens and visitors, we need to do. I appreciate, again, everyone's time in participating tonight.
Thank you, councillor. Who else would like to speak that hasn't spoken on this motion? Councillor Nolan, and then councillor Majota.
I did not mention...
I'm sorry, you've already spoken, but, all right, you can speak again, because I already called on you. Go ahead.
This is no reflection on the work from Senator Tar, Ted Costa, Ann-Margret, or the administration. This is just my observations and my dealings with the MBTA and Keolis over the last four and a half years.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Majota.
Um, yes, I'll be supporting this as well. I believe that, you know, councillor Nolan said it, you know, very well. Has nothing to do with the administration, Representative Ann-Margret, or Senator Bruce Tower, Ted Costa. I know they're working extremely hard, and that, and safety is important to them as well. So, anything that we can do to keep our, you know, citizens and ourselves safe, that's most important. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, councillor. Councillor O'Neill?
Yes, and just reiterating what previous councillors have said, I, especially what councillor Nolan said, I certainly don't trust the MBTA. And I haven't had any dealings with Keolis, but as far as the MBTA goes, I, I have very strong feelings that they will not follow through with what they say. Hopefully, they will. I have very strong feelings that they will not follow through with what they say. Hopefully they will. And this emergency order will give us. We quicker reaction time to deal with whatever happens. So, uh, thank you for bringing this forward and I'm obviously supporting this.
Great, thank you. Um, Counsel Worthley, and then I think we're ready for the vote. Go ahead, Counsel Worthley.
First, I appreciate everyone coming tonight and your support for this. I just want to make sure it's clear to the public. Counsel Gro was unable to make this meeting. We put this together in forty eight hours and he'd already, he's at his daughter's graduation reception in England.
Right, okay.
There's a five hour delay, so it's eleven o'clock there. And I just want to make sure nobody thinks that his absence today is any reflection. On his lack of support or anything like, he's been right on board with trying to move this forward and being helpful. So I should make sure that's clear and, and anybody that thinks otherwise. They wouldn't be right, that he supports what we're doing. So, um, thank you. I'm looking forward to voting for this as well, as we know.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Okay, we're clear on the motion. Um, we have, um, it was made by Counsel Worthley, it was seconded by Counsel O'Hara. And we'll do a roll call vote. Does everyone understand we need six affirmative votes to declare this an emergency? Counsel Memhard. Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman. Yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow is absent. Counsel Mijota.
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Motion to consider any proposed city council actions relative to public safety regarding the train crossings in Gloucester.
Great. Um, so there are three or more different things that we can consider at this point. A declaration with a request for action to the MBTA officials. That would be sent to two different places. First, the Board of Directors of the MBTA. Currently, the chair would be the person. Currently, the chair is Betsy Taylor, but I would just suggest that if we decide to go in that avenue. We just say the chair and keep it general. And there's another overarching board that the MBTA reports to. And that is the Department of Public Utilities. So if we decide to, to do a declaration with a request for action. Of MBTA officials, it should be sent, my recommendation would be to send to those two organizations. Because they provide the oversight. Also, we could do requests to the mayor. And as we said earlier, an amendment to the GCO. Which has the provisions of expiration because this is an emergency order, which we discussed when I read the charter. So I'm going to open this up for anyone that might want to make a motion and, um. And then we will discuss it. We might make several. And so Counsel Worthley, seeing that you are the originator of this, will, um, let you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, this is open for any counselor to make a motion and we can act on it as Madam Chair said. Immediately because of the emergency order. Whatever we implement would be good for sixty days. Spying on the sixty first day unless we were to reconvene and declare the emergency continues for an additional sixty days. That all being said, it also would buy us the time if something we make that we move forward. If it was effective and necessary, we could also use our traditional methods then to put it in over that sixty day or hundred twenty day. So whatever we do today would only be temporary for sixty days unless we act on it again. Um, I sent around.
Counsel Nolan, do you have a point of order? Or something to state? Can you unmute yourself? Thank you.
Yep. Uh, the one thing I'd want to ask is, you know, we have a lot of asks in this. I'd like to ask Suzanne Egan what we can actually do that we can put our teeth in other than an ask. And what we can enforce or ask to be enforced versus what we can ask the entities in charge to help us with.
Okay, I think that's great. Suzanne, if you're, um, if you're available, if you could, um, reappear on our screen. And, um, and I thought Counsel Nolan raises a really good question and then we'll go back to continue with Counsel Worthley.
So, um, just so to address your question as to what type of authority the city council has over this matter. The city, you're acting on an emergency basis and adopting an emergency measure, but really that only is a procedural. Method which allows you to take action that you already have authority to do. So it doesn't give, grant you any additional. Authority over this matter. Um, any type of local ordinance would not. Be, would not lend the city asserting any control over the MBTA. The MBTA is a state agency, so the city does not have any authority over that. So a local ordinance would not necessarily address an issue if your issue tonight that's being addressed. Is to. To, to communicate or to try to take some sort of steps to improve the functioning of the railroad crossings for public safety purposes. Other than an ask to the MBTA, the city council as a legislative authority does not really. You don't really have any authority actually. I mean, you're sort of blocked in, you can act to enact legislation to enact an ordinance. But other than asking and sort of letting your concerns be known, there is no authority under the charter for the city council to take.
Thank you, Suzanne. So let's go back to Counsel Worthley who is prepared to, um, to make a motion.
Yes, I just want to thank Suzanne Egan for that. And I, I'm very clear too, we don't have any additional powers. But there are some things that we could do. That have local control the city council has that could tangentially impact it. Signage, painting. Uh, I'm not proposing this tonight, but someone suggested, um, we have, in the code of ordinances, we have stacking lane requirements for drive-throughs. And if that would have some impact on that, on the area. So I'm very well aware, we can only act on things we already have control over. But there's more than just asks. There's things that we can do in terms of local ordinances for traffic flow and. Pedestrian crosswalks and things like that, if that's where we go. I have a proposal that I'd like to, uh, I wonder if Joanne could share her screen. She sent it around, uh, this afternoon.
Okay, Jeff, I don't, I, you have to wait a minute. I have to download it. Okay.
I just never shared my screen before, but I'm going to, if that's okay, um.
Just here, just share it. You're, you're able to share it.
Is it on your desktop, Counselor?
An application. So I think I've got it. Can you see my screen now?
Yep.
Okay, so we did the first one. And then I put down if emergency is invoked, then here's one emergency measure I'd like to propose. And there's subparts to it and it continues on. I don't want to assume that you've all seen it or read it. Um, I didn't know that. That Joanne Cino did send it around, but I'll read it here. So, emergency measure. Until resolved, the current MBTA train crossing issues can constitute a potential serious risk to health and safety of Gloucester citizens and visitors. And therefore, the city council respectfully requests the MBTA station and MBTA crossing personnel or transit police. At, I'm sorry, misworded. To supervise. Traffic during operating hours at all crossings. Be assigned maintenance technicians on site daily until all problems have been resolved within proven repeatable reliability. If the MBTA is unable to provide for mass transit police, the council respectfully requests the MBTA authorize and fund the detailed shifts for Gloucester police officers. And if those shifts cannot be filled, then Gloucester firefighters, some of you may know or not know that the Gloucester Code of Ordinances allows the firefighters. Section twenty two twenty one, if we have declared an emergency, to manage traffic control in an emergency situation. Gloucester is to manage traffic at all rail crossings during arrival and departure of all trains to both assure safe passage and provide our residents with assurance. Also further ask that the MBTA documents any findings related to improper operations of the crossing gates at rail crossings and any corrective actions they undertake. And report those findings to the mayor and city council as expeditiously as possible. And then lastly, further we ask the MBTA to post large signs with the emergency eight hundred phone number to report any problems. And I so move.
Second.
Okay, Counsel Worthley made the motion. It was seconded by Counsel O'Hara. So, um, let's have a discussion. Do you want to leave this up, Counselor, so we can kind of? Scroll around on it or, um, what, what are your, does anyone want to remove this from the screen? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Seeing none, we're going to leave this up.
Can you remove it? I have it, um, I personally have it printed out.
Okay.
Makes it easier to see all the counselors.
Okay. Does everyone, um, so, all right, we're back. This is, this is, this is helpful.
Because we can put it back on if we needed to, right?
Okay, great. Um, so, and, and also at any point, we can ask Suzanne to, um, to weigh in on this. It, it would be, um, I would be modifying the rules of procedure to allow Suzanne to speak on it. But I want to make sure that we are doing everything per the, what the charter and what our purview allows. Um, so let's, um, let's begin with Counsel Nolan and then we'll go to Counsel Gross and then Memhard on the motion.
All right, I am sorry to ask to put the motion in the screen share back up for a moment. Down to the section of the charter. So whether Jeff can do that, yes. And go down to the charter.
Oh, I have the charter here. I mean, on this.
Well, actually not the charter, but the, the, the procedure with the fire department.
Sure.
Did you scroll down to that?
Yeah, and I can bring that up too if we, hang on.
It's number one.
Right, but can you see my screen? Hang on. What do you see? Do you see the code of ordinances or do you see my order?
Well, in your order, you, you mentioned the fire department doing duties for traffic, but I, I just didn't really see in the charter where they're allowed. Your word specifically says, you know, railroad crossings. I know they're allowed to do things. But if, if it's not the actual ordinance that we're going to vote on, on the, on the, uh, number. It shouldn't say railroad crossings if it's not actually in there.
Okay, so can you see my screen now where I'm showing the code of ordinances?
Yes.
Section twenty two twenty one, authority of officers of police and fire departments to direct traffic. So it's not just like MBTA is traffic directing.
Right, but i- in your order, it actually, you, you listed traffic for train crossings.
I think because the emergency only relates to the train crossings.
But the actual twenty two twenty one is just that they are allowed to do it. Not arguing the fact that they can't.
Right. Police officers are hereby authorized to direct all traffic either in person or by means of visible or audible signal. In conformity with the provisions of this chapter, provided however that in the event of a fire or other emergency to expedite traffic or safeguard pedestrians. Police officers or firefighters may direct traffic as conditions they require, notwithstanding provisions of this chapter. So really what this means is. If we don't have enough police officers to fulfill the obligation or this detail that we're hoping to create. Then they would then, and, and they do it already, they refer it to the fire department and they would look for someone to fill that position.
Right, and I'm not arguing that fact. On your letter, the, the screenshot before. You put in twenty two dash twenty one and you mentioned train crossings and railroads. And it should just be twenty two dash twenty one that the fire department does have access to do patrols for traffic.
Okay, I, the reason why I thought that is that if the emergency is only around crossings, that that would be the scope for what we'd be asking them to do. Right, I hear what you're saying.
I just think that to, to clean it up on something we're voting on, that if, if on two dash eleven, it doesn't say anything about train crossings. I know it's small work and it's, it's, it's biting the, the head of it, but it's just, you know, keeping it clean that, you know. Don't put something in there that's not actually in the ordinance that you, that you, you charted.
Makes sense.
So I, you know, I, I understand the ordinance, I vote for it most likely, but you know, if we could relieve the, the language of saying. The, um, train. Uh, crossings in the fire department doing stuff for that and leave it at just the twenty two twenty one. So that'd be the, the managed traffic of rail, rail crossings, just that they're allowed to do it. So basically, you, you're looking to say that we don't have enough police officers. We can use fire department, but I wouldn't want to put, uh, language in there that mentions rail crossings. That's not actually in there.
You want to take this out?
Yeah, I, I know it's small. I just don't want people coming after us later on something that, that's not actually in an ordinance.
So if you're going to do that right now, Counsel, we need to, um, make an amendment to, um, remove that and then vote on that.
Okay.
So, um, it's, is your removal, would you like to amend the motion to remove those words?
That's Counsel Nolan's motion, right?
I, I, I would like to see it removed because it's actually not part of twenty two twenty one. On the, on the crossings.
And that's. I would second, I would second that.
Okay, so the motion is to re, is to delete, to manage traffic at real. Crossings, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, so, so that is your motion, Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that amendment?
I seconded it, Scott.
Okay, so Counsel Nolan has an amendment to remove that and, um. And then Counselor Memhard has seconded it. Um, so on this motion, is there, um, to amend? Is there any discussion, counselors?
Could I just weigh in on this, um, Madam Chair, President?
Do you go back to the faces right now too for, because Jeff is pretty quick at throwing that back up, back and forth. So. Let's look at Suzanne.
So I do have a concern about that provision which states, which is a request that the MBTA authorize. Police and fire details at, um, the railroad crossings. So the MBTA has no authority to authorize. Police or fire details in the city of Gloucester. That's an executive function and that would be the function of the administration. To determine whether or not those details would be put in place. So in terms of. Whether, what, you know, what, um, you can ask the MBTA to do, I would. I would advise that you would only want to ask them to do something that they can do, that they have the authority to do, and this they could not do.
Counselor Nolan and then Counsel O'Hara and then Counsel Worthley. On the motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Gross, I didn't see you, honest to God.
No, 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 that was, I was on, I was on the other, not on the, not on the amendment.
Oh, okay. We're still on the amendment, right? Okay.
While I'm here, Suzanne, can we ask them to pay for it?
Well, so yeah, part of what that private, that section says, it says authorize and fund. So I, what I was addressing, the fact that MBTA. Cannot authorize them to do that. You can ask them to fund police details and then if they make a determination they want to fund something like that. Then that goes to the administration to determine whether or not they're going to actually. That manage the police in that manner in terms of having the details. But there's, everybody has their own authority and so that's what you just want to be mindful and who has authority to do what and to ask for what.
Okay, um, I, I'm going to go to Counsel Nolan because he still has his hand up.
I, Tony, right on the money. Um, I, I believe that we have a right to ask them to secure it and. They have the ability to ask the police and fire to, to appropriate their, their jobs if hired. So I, I don't think it's a legal issue whether they can be hired to do it. I think it, it's a, an issue. Of them using their own people first and if they can't do something, then possibly move on to our police department. Or through the regular Community Service Act with Rockport, Essex, Manchester, Ipswich, and then the fire department. There's, there's people that by our charter are able and by law to do traffic duties. And that would be the question. The large question would be, are we allowed to ask them to fund this? If it becomes a mandate, that would be the hard, the hard question.
Counsel Worthley.
If I could suggest, we, we have a motion to amend it on the floor right now to remove. The train crossing as Counsel Nolan did. If we, maybe can address that first and then come back to amending the authorizing or funding part. Just to make it a little, the meeting flow a little more easily, that's my recommendation.
Without objection, counselors? Without objection. So would anyone else like to speak on the removal of managed traffic at rail crossings, removing that? Seeing none? Uh, Counsel Worthley, go ahead.
Reason why I put it in there because the emergency relates to the location, not necessarily whether. Reason why I put it in there, because the emergency relates to the location, not necessarily whether fire can or can't do that. So that's what I put in, but I have no objection to take it out. I think it's very clear where we're talking about, so um I'm happy to support the amendment.
Um, Counsel O'Neal.
Can you just, could we amend it to say to manage traffic, period? Because that's what it's doing, that's what we're doing. We're managing stopping people from getting hit by the.
I think that's what we took out, so it's just to manage traffic.
Manage traffic, period, right?
To both assure safe passage and provide our residents with reassurance.
Okay.
What twenty-two, twenty-one says.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on the motion? Seeing none, a roll call vote. Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neal.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes, Counsel Gross.
Yes, and sorry, I thought we were we were had moved off of this, but.
It's okay.
Counsel Grow is absent, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
The yeses have it on the amendment to our first motion. Eight in favor, one absent. Now back to the main motion. Um, so let's um speak to the main motion.
Do we want to amend?
Make an amendment. I move to make an amendment.
Go ahead, Counsel Gross.
I move that we remove um authorize and and capitalize fund. Make that change.
Second.
Is everyone clear that the the amendment from Counsel Gross, seconded by Counsel Worthley, is to delete authorize and on section on bullet number one?
And capitalize the F of fund because the first word in the.
Thank you, Counselor.
Gross.
Okay, so we have a motion uh for amendment, Counsel Gross, and it was seconded by Counsel Worthley, if I'm not mistaken. I was looking at my words, not the screen at the time. Um, so who would like to speak on the um on this new amendment? Seeing.
It cleans up. I I think that it helps to clean up the language as as appropriate.
Okay. Um, without objection, um I'd like to just ask Suzanne if she's comfortable with that small um amendment.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we have a new amendment to the main motion. Um, so let's do a roll call vote. Um, Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neal.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes, Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow, absent, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
The yeses have it on the amendment to the main motion, eight in favor, one absent, to delete, authorize and and capitalize fund. Okay, now we're back to the main motion again.
Okay.
Counselor um Gross.
Yeah, I um, you know, in that communication that we got um from from whoever sent it from the MBTA that uh Senator Tyers Office forwarded on to us, they talked about how, you know, because of the tail, whatever it's called, the you know, the ro- the rolling backwards, um setting off the sensor motion and then dropping the gates. Uh, the fact that they figure that it's okay to basically uh undo, un, you know, just to to create a a backup on one of our most busiest, one of our busiest thoroughfares that it that, you know, it that that's just an okay solution, um I find um not okay. Uh, so I don't know if there's some way we can address that, you know, having that solution that they've come up with, that that, you know, we would like to seek a solution that does not have um and and a um you know, an undue amount of delay on one of our busiest thoroughfares. Uh, that that really bothers me that that their solution is, all right, well, fine, we'll just we'll just make the trains in the station, it's going to Rockport. Why is why, you know, we had, I remember, I don't know, but years ago, we had this problem with the traffic lights on Eastern Avenue. This is years and years ago when they reconfigured it and everything, and we had Mass DOT come down and they they fixed it just because it was it just created all these delays in every direction. And this is a similar action um being created by the Mass DOT, who was, you know, the authority over the MBTA. So I don't know if there's a place in here to mention that, or if we um, you know, how many bites of the apple are we gonna be able to have? So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that I think that's unfair to our citizens.
Thank you, on the main motion. Counsel Worthley.
So I could not agree more what Counsel Gross said. And that came to us two hours ago, that that was the proposed solution, just keep the gates down for all that period of time. That's not what we're voting on tonight, but I, after we vote for this, we can certainly make another motion on that because I think there'll be unintended consequences, including people who are waiting for five, six, seven minutes while the trains at the station already passed. People will be tempted to go around the gates, they'll be tempted to speed around Maplewood Ave, creating other problems. And there's a reason why they made the change to allow traffic to flow, because it would, in especially summertime, it was backing up all the way to the rotary at times, so to leave the gates down as a solution, I always think fifty-three years ago, we put a man on the moon and returned him safely to Earth, and we can't get a gate to go up and down with two thousand twenty-two technology, and our solution is keep it down and keep traffic tied up for six minutes. I'm with you in that. I recommend we vote on what we have and maybe draft something. We have these sort of emergency abilities to create a motion and vote on it tonight if we'd like to. And I would support that. But as far as what we have before us, I'm not creative enough to do that in real time, so if we could uh discuss or vote on the motion on the table, I think that'd be the right course of action.
Um, Counsel Memard.
No, I agree with Tony, and and I I don't know that it's necessary to delay. It's very easy for us to add a a closing close sentence at the end, which says that uh uh this council uh further expresses concern uh that it is unacceptable that MBTA's solution solutions shall further impact uh or delay traffic on Washington Street.
I'm writing it now.
So um I'd just like to speak for a second on number one, I'm comfortable with the rest of the document, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with um number one, and I'll tell you why. I'm uncomfortable because I understand that we're asking the MBTA to fund it, and I I like that change. Um, but but we are, we are asking something that we don't completely understand if our police and fire department have the uh staffing, the contractual requirements, although the charter basically was pretty clear. But I I just, I don't know if we have that twenty-four, seven coverage right now to do that, and I and and so I'm feeling a little bit a little bit premature to put this out there without understanding from Chief Smith and from Chief Conley um how they would handle something like this. And if we're making a commitment, if it gets funded, that they need to be there to do this, and for some reason they can't, um it it kind of puts us in an awkward situation in terms of priorities. For example, if we have a brush fire that we need the forty-two members of the fire department at Paul's Hill again to focus on the fire, and someone is at a critical intersection um doing traffic detail for a crossing, I'm a little bit conflicted with our making that decision that that is what we would like. So um I guess my my preference would be to remove that from this and then focus on what we know we can hopefully ask the MBTA to do for us in the form of a declaration, and that we send that to the Department of Public Utilities and the MBTA um Board of Directors. So that's, I'm I'm just speaking out loud because this is something that I'm just a little bit unsettled about. I like the spirit of the funding, I I get that. I'm struggling with this. Um, Counsel Nolan and then Counsel Worthley. And I and I didn't, I didn't make an amendment, I'm I'm discussing this right now, so Counsel Nolan and then Counsel Worthley.
Uh, I believe that we're all discussing it right now, there's no amendments that we're doing right now. Um, I the funded thing would be a request to the MBTA to fund um doing the security at that. Um, the way that things are panning out um with the other three gates in Gloucester coming up in the fall. Um, it's it's almost like we're saying, and I don't want to be an extreme on this, but, you know, due to the public safety, people's awareness and things that are happening, is you're almost saying it's all right if the MBTA is a drunk driver, and they're just gonna go do what they want to do without the exception of safety for the public. So if they can't guarantee that their gates are gonna work, and the public that works with them trusting the gates, whether they go through and the gates come back down, or the holding up of traffic, i- it's it's almost borderline admitting to a danger, and they have not admitted to a danger. They said things are working properly, but yet they're changing them. And again, this isn't an administrative or a counsel of Bruce or Ann Margaret or Ted situation. It's a situation that people are concerned of with safety. So if we don't voice our opinions on the matter of a safety or recommend that we actually have some sort of officer there at the cost of the MBTA, it's a cost of doing business for our town. And if you want to stroll through our town and run run your situation, then you should at least listen to the people in the town. We all pay taxes, we fund the MBTA, and we also, you know, if you have to go on a ride for it, you pay for it. So if they can't safely go through the town and they're trying to make improvements, it shouldn't be the taxpayers of Gloucesters responsibility to pay for details to be there and look at them. It it should be their problem. And we can't, we probably, you know, can't enforce that and make them do that. But we can certainly request that they take the priority of the people of the city's safety above and beyond what they will or will not accept as their situation. The problem is, there is a problem. Um, we still have some time to determine if Washington Street's working. I don't like the language of saying that we're gonna get to the other gates in the fall. And so that would be my two cents, it's not an amendment, it's my communication to what's in front of us.
Um, I'm gonna ask Suzanne um without objection to um to weigh in uh as a um exception to the rules right now of um our discussion, so Counsel Egan uh um Attorney Egan, if you could um weigh in, that would be great.
Yes, thank you. So I just want to remind the council um about your authority once again. So your request would be to the MBTA to fund details, and that's essentially all that would you would have the authority to do. You know, you don't have any authority to fund the details. You don't have any authority to require police or firefighters to take the details to do that or to even ask them to do that. So the only thing that this letter would be doing is to be saying to the MBTA, please fund, right, appropriate money to the city of Gloucester to fund a detail to do this, and that's it. Um, so it concerns about or so, I know that the council has a desire to make sure that these uh trains crossings are safe and that there aren't any hazards to the public with regard to this. It's really not necessarily something that the city council, as the legislative authority of the city, can take action on, and that's really an executive function. It's the administration, the mayor, that is the executive functioning um arm of the government under the charter that says, this is what we're going to do in this instance to address this public safety hazard. The council can make a, you know, send a letter and say, will you, MBTA, we think there's a public safety issue, and will you fund details, make that available, but that's all that is. So I just, I don't want to, I don't want to create, with asking a letter to the MBTA, you you know, I would advise the council to do something that you have the authority to do, as opposed to ask for something that you don't necessarily have the authority to do, because you want to make your actions have an impact and um be effective.
Thank you, Suzanne. Um, Counsel Memard.
I I would just like to follow up on Suzanne's very helpful guidance there and suggest to Council President that you you expressed concerns just a moment ago, with all due respect, really go down the rabbit hole of of beyond what we need to worry about, we're we're making these requests, but we shouldn't be, it's not our position at this time to be concerned about staffing levels at the police or fire departments. Uh, that's just, that's that's a separate issue. Um, they're there for public safety, how how that's governed is not our germane matter at at this time. Our request is valid, but we can't get into the weeds of uh worrying about manpower issues.
I appreciate that, Counsel Memard, Counsel Gross.
Uh, yes, um, make sure I'm on, yep. Uh, so also, I think that maybe we've narrowed this down too much to have it Gloucester police officers, because if we notice that when there's details, we see Essex cops, we see state cops, we see Ipswich cops, we see there's a regional pool that's that can be um you know, uh used to um for them to staff these with. It doesn't necessarily just have to be Gloucester police officers. So I think maybe we've made this too narrow on the police officers. On the Gloucester firefighter side, that is narrow because it's in it's in our code of ordinances. But I think um, you know, we all know that that it's been a regional um that when people, when utilities or, you know, there's a major job going on, um, you know, when we were having sewer work done back in the day and stuff, you saw cops from all over were here, including state troopers. So there's a pool that um that they can they can grab from, and it doesn't necessarily just have to be uh Gloucester police officers.
So um Counsel Gross, would you like to amend the motion to um change to delete Gloucester and make it a more general term?
Well, Counselor Worthley had his hand up, but I think we should see what he has to say.
Okay, Counsel Worthley.
Thank you. So first, I absolutely agree that there's a lot more people who we share those jobs with. Um, if Gloucester police office can't do it, as you mentioned, uh the state police officers, other cities and towns. What I'd like to see, and and I don't want to ever presume that I would want to have the authority to, as a counselor, to tell the chief police how to manage that, but I'd like to have the Gloucester Police Department be in charge of that. So if they can't fill a shift, they have a process they go through with, um I forget the word, but it's not mutually, but where they go through and ask other cities and towns. I'd like to see the the Gloucester Police Chief still be in charge of that, if we have some say over that, and then he can manage his department how he sees fit.
Counsel Gross.
Um, I'm not sure if we even care wh- what police officer is there. Um, you know, we're asking them to fund this. Should we, should we, you know, handicap them by saying, you know, it has to be at least Gloucester police officers first, uh should we even care about that? I I don't think we should, I think we just want to have, you know, even if it's flagmen, if it's someone there who's paying attention to the gate and can warn the drivers in ample time, coming down, stop. Um, you know, I think that that's that that's that's all I'm really concerned about. Um, so I don't know if we have to make an amendment. Trying to bring back up my other screen here to.
Share it again if it's easier.
See it. Um, I have it on this thousand-year-old computer. It's behind. Um, but anyway, so, yeah, if 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 it's okay, I can make an amendment. If that's the way we want to go.
Um, um. So let's go to Counsel Majota, then we'll go back to Counsel Gross.
Yes, uh, before you make the amendment, I just want.
Yes, uh before you make the amendment, I just want to agree a few um. It it really, should it matter who oversees this or who's watching the the train tracks? I think the main reason for this meeting is safety. And regardless of who's doing it, as long as they're authorized. And have the ability to do it, it shouldn't matter who is doing it, I think that's the most important part. That's it.
Thank you Counsel. Um so Counsel Gross, do you want to make an amendment or what are your thoughts?
Sure, I'll make an amendment. Um I amend that number one says fund. The detailed shifts for police officers and if shifts cannot be filled, then Gloucester firefighters. Code of ordinances, section twenty-two, twenty-one, to manage traffic at at rail crossings. Um or no, sorry, uh. To assure, to both.
Graphic.
To manage traffic. To both assure safe passage and provide our residents with assurance, I don't have the amended version in front of me. So but what my amendment is, is to cha- take out Gloucester. From, you know, shifts, get rid of Gloucester between four and police.
Okay, and and you moved that, right?
And uncapitalized police.
Got it. Um and did you move that Counsel?
So moved.
Okay, um.
Sorry.
Who seconded it, I'm sorry. I didn't. Who seconded?
Scott did.
So Gross and Memard. Okay, um is there a discussion, counselors? Go ahead, um on the on the motion, Counsel Gross.
Yes, on Counsel Gross's motion, uh where it says police officers, um. Can it be read authorized official or person exact or work, and necessarily does not need to be a police officer, correct? It could be NBA. Flag per whoever is just needs to make sure cars do not pass or do the right thing. So it it technically does not need to be a police officer, correct? Could it be just an authorized person who. Can oversee that or does it have to say, does it need to be a police officer?
Um yeah, Counsel Gross.
Yeah, yeah, um. Frank, in in in. A uh above um in this motion, we say. Station MBTA crossing personnel and transit police or transit police, so we already addressed that.
It doesn't have to be in the, your amendment then?
Well, w- we're asking them to, first, we're asking them to do that and then this amendment. That what this portion of the motion is about is to, if they don't do what they, what we've asked them to do above that. Which is, um I don't know if that's clear. A up there says station MBTA crossing personnel slash transit police. Um to supervise traffic during operational hours at all crossings.
Okay.
So, you know, that that would not be police officers.
Okay, and. I mean, I know this is up for discussion, so we would need three police officers then. Right, are we talking just Washington Street or do we need one for Maplewood? And then the one further down, I forget that street, and then I guess West Gloucesters really does have an issue currently. But we would need three officers to manage each four. Four officers to manage that for for an entire day. Throughout the day, wherever the shifts are. Or personnel.
That's not for us to manage.
Okay.
Counsel O'Neil, looks like she's talking, so we'll give you the floor.
Thank you, um so Washington Street, Cleveland Street, Maplewood Ave. And um Cedar Street and Willard Street are like so close together, it's just. They come together in like a V, so one officer should be able to manage that, but what I want to know is. Who's control, who is in control of? The officers, like who delegates, who's in charge, like where Jeff Worthley said. Have the, or someone said, I'm not sure. Um that Chief Conley be in charge of who goes where. If if it's not Chief Conley. Conley, is it the MBTA and who at the MBTA? How do you, I. Who at the MBTA, if if not Chief Conley, who?
So can I, I I I just want to take a stab at that, so. In in looking at this, I would think that. Well, this doesn't completely answer your question Counsel, but I was thinking that. It's actually, it would be, it would be who the MBTA to supply their own flag carriers. Because it's going to be a lot less expensive than paying time and a half overtime for a police officer. In Gloucester and if they're, and if they're funding it, it will be a lot less, but that doesn't really answer your question, so um. So uh Counsel O'Hara and then Counsel Nolan, to uh Counsel O'Neil's question that I didn't answer very well.
Thank you, um no, no offense to anybody, but I I think the intent of what uh. Counsel Worthley put forward and were discussing. I think the bottom line is we're asking the MBTA to provide qualified people. To staff their crossings. Whether Washington Street, Maplewood, Cleveland and Cedar. Um beyond that, I I think we're 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 discussing things that are outside of our purview. A- and we need to just keep this simple and move on in the in this business, thank you.
Thank you Counsel, Counsel Nolan.
Uh I I agree with Counsel O'Hara and that's part of what I wanted to say, um we're asking the MBTA to man their crossings. Um they have their own staff, they have their own police system, uh we're asking them to fund it, we're asking them to take care of it for the public safety. I would think that they would be the people to be in charge if this did happen. And they couldn't find uh people among this staff, they would probably reach out to a credible um. Companies or to police departments to assist them in this matter if they did do it. And also again, um a police detail is not uh time and a half. It's actually a detail, it's a assigned shift, it doesn't affect their uh retirement status or their pay. Or any of that, and so it's not a time and a half job, it's just detail. Um but we're, our ask here is for the MBTA to uh assign someone to safeguard our citizens. And they have the first refusal at how they want to do that if they in so fact uh listen to us.
Thank you, um Madam Clerk, just help me for a second. We are still on the amendment, correct, right now? The amendment to change to to delete Gloucester um and. Put a small police. The Counsel Gross seconded by Counsel Memard. Because we haven't voted on the amendment, I believe.
No, you still want it.
Okay, thank you, okay, any more um discussion on the amendment? Okay, so let's vote the amendment. Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yeah.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes, Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow, absent, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
The amendment um is successful, um eight in favor, one absent. Now we're back to the main motion. So. It's hard for me because I always have to speak last and sometimes I want to speak, so who who would like to speak?
I have no objection if you want to speak first.
I have to be so patient all the time, so um one of the things that I do want to make sure that we're clear on is. Um I would like to call this a declaration. Which I don't think we have to change anything, it's just how we present this, because this is what I've been told is the appropriate thing to do. Because what we're doing is we're going typically, we have to do a request to the mayor to ask the legislators to do this. And we have to go through this bumpy road to get what we want and I've been told. Um by legal that a declaration, calling this a declaration allows us as a council. To make this recommendation for action directly to. The two boards that oversee the MBTA. So I'm hoping that everyone is in agreement to that, because I think that that's the appropriate tool that we should be using. And if we do vote on this, which I do hope that we do and I will be supporting it, um I would like that to kind of frame it. And then what I would say is that um by tomorrow morning. Um I could sign on behalf of all of us. And we could get this out as an email and then federal express to the two boards, the overarching boards. Um for the MBTA, which once again. Um are the Department of Public Utilities and the MBTA Board of Directors for the for the chair. So with with those provisions, um I'm very supportive of this and I will be supporting it. Who else would like to speak on this amendment, I mean, no, the amendment's over, I'm sorry, on the motion, Counsel Nolan.
Uh I would still, again, like I said before, and you mentioned it just now, is a copy, this is going to the Department of Public Utilities as well.
Yes. I said that, yeah. Awesome. Who else would like to speak on this motion? Was that Counsel Memard's dog?
No, for one.
Not mine.
No, it was mine.
Your dog's usually very well behaved. Okay, who else would like to speak on this?
Now you got to go and talk. I I would.
Anyone else?
I would like to cir- I just circulated an email that the uh. The federal government has just come down, issued their complaint about the MBTA today. And it's quite extensive and it it will support our concerns.
Okay, I think we're ready, is everyone clear on what we're voting on right now?
Well.
Go ahead, Counsel Gross.
So I was just wondering, Scott, um I did we want to add anything at the end of this, not as part of our asks, but part of our. Um and Scott had very succinctly put it in language um about the delay. Their their solution is not necessarily in the best interest of Gloucester. Did we want to put?
Unacceptable that that any quote unquote solution would impact or delay. Uh traffic on Washington Street, which is the city's major thoroughfare.
Do we want to leave, is that a separate statement?
If you want to amend this right now, you could certainly add that, um.
Just thinking out loud.
Okay. Counsel Nolan has his hand raised.
I I definitely think that that should be part of the um request, let me ask it. To take their problem and put it more on our already congested roads. Um it's something that's important, so I think that should definitely be added to it and and someone should make a motion uh to add that and then. Look to Counsel Memard to add that.
Oh. Who has the words from the document that? We shared, um. So this was the, let's see. Okay, this was the bullet that says, once changes are implemented, when trains stop at Gloucester Station, the gates will stay down for the duration of the time. The train is stopped at the station until it clears the crossing significantly longer period than the current design, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so what I would say is that we want to. Um amend the motion. By adding, why don't we just add number four? To state. Further, the city council.
Considers it unacceptable.
Considers it unacceptable that.
For the MBTA.
That the solution is will entail a significantly longer period. Counsel Memard, I'll let you do it, because you seem like you're more in your game than right now, so shoot.
If you got it, that's fine.
No, I'm I'm stumbling, I'm stuttering, so go ahead, you make it.
Gloucester Gloucester City Council. Further states that it is unacceptable for the MBTA's proposed quote unquote solution. To further impact or delay traffic on Washington Street, a major thoroughfare in the city of Gloucester.
Can you just add period to that, a significant, a significantly longer period? The recommendation is a significantly longer period. Than the current design. That's the only thing I didn't hear, I'd like to see, could you try?
That's that's fine, I mean, they're trying to improve and put new technology in. There just has to be clarity that the new technology benefits us not, is not a detriment to uh the level of service and interruption.
So can you, do you mind, do you mind trying to say the words so we could, we get it right?
You you stated again, I'm I'm, I didn't catch what you were saying exactly where you.
So the bullet. Says, once changes are implemented, when trains stop at Gloucester Station, the gates will stay down for the duration of the time. The train is stopped at the station until it clears the crossing a significantly longer period than the current design. So what we want to say is we want to amend this by adding number four. Um that. It is not acceptable. To increase. The period of time. That will delay. Traffic on Gloucesters, at Gloucester Station. How's that, and I so move?
I think Scott's was better.
Then then Scott, it's back to you, my friend, because I'm a little bit fried right now, so why don't you try? I'd love you to take the lead here.
So I I item four would read simply that. Uh the council wishes to express that it is unacceptable for the MBTA's proposed quote unquote solutions. Uh re- shall not result. In impacting the time of. What was it, I?
They'll not create a longer period, wait period.
Impact shall not create a longer wait period. Or delay on Washington Street traffic.
Can you move?
Want to read back? And I still move, subject, somebody read it back, reading it back so we can.
Oh my gosh, I tried to write as quickly as I could, but I'm not sure if I got that. Joanne, did you get that?
Think I got it.
Go ahead, um Counsel O'Neil, if you can um.
What a team.
All right, if you got it, Joanne, you can. No, okay, uh number four, the couns- this is what I got. The council wishes to express that it is unacceptable that the MBTA's solution. Shall produce a longer delay or create more traffic. That's all I have, that the MBTA's solutions.
Which which will cre- which will create more traffic?
Counsel wishes to express that it is unacceptable that the MBTA's solutions. Shall produce a longer delay or create more traffic.
Which, how about which will create more traffic?
Instead, okay.
That, is that okay? Um. Counsel Memard, you want to, you want to let Counsel O'Neil take, take that motion and and um and move it?
I second what you just read.
Uh let me do it again, because I just changed it. The council wishes to express that is it is unacceptable that the MBTA's solutions. Which will create longer delays and create more traffic, that doesn't read right. Uh is unacceptable that the MBTA's solutions. Will create. Longer delays and. will create longer delays and more traffic. Does that make sense? Council wishes to express that it is unacceptable that the MBTA's solutions will create longer delays and more traffic.
Well, I'd just say traffic backup.
And more traffic backup.
So, move it, Counselor, I think it's good.
I, I got, I got one.
Gosh, okay.
And that, that's, I, I just, hold on, hold on one second, let me finish it.
All right. I was just typing as he talked.
Okay. You ready?
Do you want me to type it or no?
No, I wrote it down.
All right.
So, number four. Further, the Gloucester City Council finds unacceptable that the MBTA's solution is to create longer wait periods, which will create long traffic delays on Washington Street, a major thoroughfare.
Second. So, Counsel, Counsel Gross made the motion. And I think I heard Counsel Majota seconded it. Did you second it, Counselor?
I will, I did not, but I will.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, I, I was just trying to write this down, as I wasn't looking at the screen. Who would like to second this? We've got.
Memard.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll give it to Worthley. So, it's, so the motion's made by Counsel Gross and seconded by Counsel Worthley. Is there, this is on the amendment, the main motion. Is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none? We have a roll call vote, counts on the amendment. Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yeah.
Counsel O'Neal?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow, absent. Counsel Majota?
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent on the amendment. Now, we're back once again to the main motion. Would anyone like to have further discussion on this? Seeing none? Is everyone clear on what we're voting on? Okay. Roll call vote, counselors. Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan? Did you say yes, Counsel Nolan?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neal?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow is absent. Counsel Majota?
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Counselors, I think this concludes our meeting. The only thing that I would like to say, what, oh, it looks like someone wants to talk.
Vote on the main motion.
Excuse me? That was the main motion.
I believe we still have to.
That was it.
That was it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of just bring it, bring it up. So, there are some facial expressions that say that something isn't clear right now. So, Counsel O'Neal, why don't you speak to why you're not clear? Can you unmute yourself?
Evidently, I cannot, hold on. I'm reading off of the email. The motion that we just voted on was number one, correct? Authorize and fund the detail shifts for police officers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then?
No, it was a whole thing. It was a whole thing that Counsel Worthley put up at the beginning, starting with number two.
It does, I don't remember it being stated that the Gloucester City Council further asks that the MBTA documents any findings related to improper operations of the crossing gates at rail crossings, along with corrective actions, and report the findings to the mayor and the city council as expeditiously as possible. And there was another statement, we ask the MBTA to post large signs with their emergency 800 number to report any problems. We didn't vote on that, any of that.
I, no, I, it was, it was on the screen share that Counsel Worthley presented early on.
Right, that's what I just read, but I don't, we voted on that?
Mm-hmm.
We did, we didn't, we didn't have to amend those or anything.
Sorry?
Did them all at once.
We did them all at once, we didn't have to amend those. We, those were properly worded and everything. So, we all agreed on that, that's why we did the main vote.
Okay. My.
Okay, everyone, everyone's clear? Counsel Worthley, and then I'd just like to wrap up. Counsel Worthley, you have the floor.
Thank you, and I'll be very brief. First, I want to be very grateful and just express my gratitude to everyone who came out tonight and participated in this. And to the public, typically, when we present motions, we draft them, we send them to committee, they get amended. We don't have to do this sort of in real time. The emergency provision gives us the ability to do this like this, but it's hard, right? I, if we had decided who we're going to, what we're going to dinner tonight, I think we'd have 20 answers. And someone would say they don't, they already ate and they don't want to eat. So, the expectation shouldn't be that we're going to have every word written exactly right, every comma in the right place. We're doing this sort of on the fly because of the emergency nature. And I just want to thank everyone for being patient and working through this. Because it's not, this isn't all our full-time jobs every day. We're doing the best we can to legislate on the fly. So, I just want to make sure that's clear, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Nolan?
I, I, I want to thank all the council tonight for all their work and Jeff for bringing this up and, and working on it. This did start with a quiet zone issue and it morphed into other things that have happened. And I, I just want to again say, this doesn't have any reflection on, on our local Aunt Margaret, Ruth Tar, or our mayor. These are concerns of our citizens, and these are just an ask of the MBTA. It's not essentially going to happen, it's up to them. It's just us showing our support for the citizens of Gloucester that we recognize a situation that includes safety and we're doing our part within our boundaries to be heard. And our voices are your voices. And thank you all for all the communications that we've received on this.
Thank you, Counselor. So, just to, just to bring this in and then we can, we can vote to adjourn. I just wanted to repeat that this will be under the umbrella of a declaration. And it will be the exact motion that we made with the votes. And I will sign on behalf of all, the whole city council. And tomorrow, we will get a Federal Express document out to both the Department of Public Utilities, the Chair of that board, and the MBTA Board of Directors Chair. And then we will ask the city clerk to also send an immediate email to each one of those locations. So, the email beats the Federal Express document that will go out as well with the original. So, without objection, counselors, I wanted to just mention that if anybody is unclear. Counsel O'Neal?
I'm just wondering, will you copy the mayor, obviously, and, or not?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a great point. I will copy the mayor and Senator Tar and Representative Ferrante.
I figured it was understood, but I just wanted to make sure.
No, that's, that's a good point. We'll make sure that we include that, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question, if I may.
Go ahead, Counsel Worthley.
While we're in this sort of declaration of emergency, and this might be for Suzanne Egan, which lasts 60 days, does that give us the authority as counselors to bring something forward and vote on it on this issue without our normal process for the entire 60 days or just tonight?
I would.
Go ahead, Suzanne Egan, go ahead.
Yes, so that would just be for tonight. So, each time you would want to, if you want to consider another emergency measure, you would go through the same process and make that determination that the emergency exists. Take your two-thirds vote of the full city council and then your emergency action.
So, the emergency doesn't last for 60 days, the action we take lasts for 60 days.
So, it, the, under the charter, you, you just went through the process of voting on an emergency measure. You didn't declare a state of emergency, you did nothing else regarding emergency other than voting on an emergency measure.
Actually, we voted firstly to declare an emergency.
You did, well, you voted that the, an emergency, so you voted that the measure was necessary in response to a, an emergency situation, right? It's an emergency situation, so you, you made a specific determination. The city council doesn't have the authority to declare a state of emergency. You have the authority to adopt emergency measures.
So, what was the first vote that we took? That emergency exit, right?
Right.
For our charter provisions, so we could take an emergency measure and vote on it tonight. But that expires today. We have to then have another emergency declaration in order to begin another motion for it, is that?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion? Oh, just to kind of pull us all together, thank you all for a very productive meeting. I think that we covered a lot today, and this was a little bit of uncharted waters right now. And thank you for being here and for Counsel Worthley, O'Hara and O'Neal for bringing forward this special meeting. So, without saying anymore, is there a motion to adjourn?
No moves.
I did.
Moved.
Motion made by Counsel Worthley, seconded by Counsel Majota. So, now we're going to have a roll call vote. Counsel Memard? We're voting to adjourn, Counsel Memard. Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neal?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes, and thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow, absent. Counsel Majota?
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody, thank you, Joanne.
Joanne, I'm sending you this right now.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you, Joanne. Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Good job, Val.
Thanks, I appreciate it.